Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 23, 2023, meeting of the McMinnville City Council. It is 6:00 PM, and I'll call the meeting to order. Ask our city recorder to please do a roll call.
Counselor Jerry.
Present.
Counselor Minky.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Present.
Counselor Peralta. Counsel President Garvin.
Present.
And Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you. We're, as per usual, we're going to start our evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have many members of our, of our team that provide emergency medical services. And since this is Emergency Medical Services Week, in addition to being Public Works Week, I would ask our fire and EMS teams to come to the front of the room and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, along with our Public Works Director, Anne Pagano. Thank you.
What do you do to the flag of the United States of America? To stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In honor of National Emergency Medical Services Week, I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and emergency medical transport, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-the-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designated Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to 27th, 2023, as National Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of McMinnville, and I urge all community members to observe Emergency Medical Services Week and support our first responder, our first response resources throughout the city and our first responders. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 23rd day of May, 2023. Thank you so much for your service. We will also celebrate National Public Works Week. And for those of you that don't know, we do have a community fair and state-of-the-city address capping Public Works Week this year, and that will be held right out here at Civic Plaza on Thursday, May 25th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of McMinnville, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for building, maintaining, improving, and protecting our community's transportation, water, power, supply, water and wastewater treatment systems, public buildings, parks, and open spaces, and other structures and facilities essential to, for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders in the City of McMinnville to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community, and whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby designate the week of May 21st to May 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the City of McMinnville, and I call upon all citizens, business leaders, and civic organizations to recognize the substantial contributions of the employees of McMinnville Water and Light and the employees of the city's Public Works Department, which includes engineering, operations, wastewater, and the airport, make to protecting and enhancing our health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 23rd day of May, 2023, and thank you so much to our Public Works Department. Thank you. Tonight, we have a public hearing regarding ordinance number 5134, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the McMinnville Municipal Code and Northeast Gateway Plan Development Overlay, ordinance 4971, to amend standards for short-term rentals, approving the decision findings and conclusionary findings for docket G123, and ending the moratorium enacted by ordinance number 5118, and extended by ordinance number 5127. I'd like to call on Senior Planner Tom Shower to give a presentation of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. This is a legislative hearing this evening to consider ordinance 5134. This is on page 6 of your packet. This is docket G123 for the amendments to short-term rentals. Ordinance 5134, the ordinance itself is on page 13 of your packet, has five sections. Section 1 amends the zoning ordinance with revising the standards for short-term rentals. Section 2 amends the provisions of the Northeast Gateway Plan Development Overlay. Section 3 will adopt a decision document of the findings for docket G123. Section 4 ends the moratorium on short-term rentals that was established by ordinance 5118 and extend by 5127. So that would end upon the effective date of this ordinance and adoption of new standards. And this, Section 5 indicates the ordinance would take effect 30 days after passage. So the first item is the amendments to the zoning ordinance. Essentially, short-term rentals are listed as a permitted use in the residential zones, including R1, R2, R3, R4, R5, and OR Office Residential, subject to standards listed in the section listed above on the overhead. Short-term rentals, the proposed amendment would change the standards in that section and thereby changing those standards as they apply in each of those zones. It would also amend the off-street parking standards in Chapter 1760 of the zoning ordinance for internal consistency with those provisions. Second, during the Planning Commission public hearing, they heard testimony about the regulations governing short-term rentals within the Northeast Gateway Overlay District. There are some areas, there are three sub-areas within the Northeast Gateway Overlay. One of those includes some residentially-zoned properties shown on the overhead, and currently in the Northeast Gateway Overlay, short-term rentals are a conditional use permit. And the testimony and recommendation from the Planning Commission was that the standards, if you have underlying residential zoning, would be changed to match those that also apply to other residential properties, and that they would be a permitted use subject to spacing standards and the same development standards that apply to short-term rentals in other residential zones. In terms of public testimony, the minutes of the March 16th Planning Commission hearing are provided on page 30 of your packet. They reflect the oral testimony that was presented at that time. Written testimony that was submitted is on page 34 of the packet, and we have not received any additional written testimony since the council packet went out or since that testimony at the time of the Planning Commission hearing. And we did have one advanced notification request to speak at the hearing from Mark Davis this evening. The Planning Commission found the applicable criteria were satisfied, as noted in the decision document, both the provisions of the zoning ordinance addressing the purpose statement and the provisions of the comprehensive plan and the applicable goals and policies as well. So the major changes, this essentially procedurally, the moratorium was enacted last fall. Since then, the Planning Commission held a series of work sessions and talked through a range of issues that are outlined in the staff report, and ultimately came to a recommendation to address the revisions that are described on the next series of slides. So one of the key issues was a concern about concentration of short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods close to the downtown core area, and whether the current spacing standard of 200 feet was sufficient to balance essentially maintaining the quality and character of residential neighborhoods and balancing that with short-term rental accommodation for the tourism. The Planning Commission considered a variety of different spacing standards and had a unanimous recommendation to increase this, the recommendation to increase that from 200 feet to 500 feet. The other key provisions that changed are really a focus on trying to regulate the nature of the structure rather than the way a short-term rental may be listed in any type of advertisement or listing for where it's offered. So off-street parking requirements, or the proposal is to revise those from the number of guest rooms that may be offered at any time if that differs from the number of bedrooms in the home itself, so that off-street parking for short-term rentals would be tied to the bedrooms in the home, and that's defined as to what's a bedroom. The provisions also specify that parking would need to be on the same property, not on a nearby property through a parking agreement. And other key provisions clarify what's required in terms of emergency contact information. There's a requirement to mail emergency contact information to surrounding properties, YCOM and the City of McMinnville, prior to commencing the short-term residential use. There are some provisions that are incorporated into the standards following some of the litigation that occurred on a short-term rental to address compliance issues and enforcement issues. So one of the provisions that's incorporated is essentially the specifying that failure to immediately improperly respond to emergencies or complaints can result in enforcement action, potentially revocation of the permit based on language dealing with a reasonable homeowner standard that came out of the litigation. Other kind of, again, operational components are city and state taxes need to be remitted in timely manner. Applicants need to register with the Finance Department as a transient lodging provider before starting the short-term residential, rental use, and listing and advertisement of short-term rentals and advertisements needs to include their short-term rental permit number. Essentially, any offer for rent or operation of short-term rentals limited to sleeping only in bedrooms, which is defined as rooms with a door, window, and built-in closet. For studios, those would be regulated in the same manner as a one-bedroom apartment, or one-bedroom unit. Again, there's some additional enforcement language that enforcement may include full cost recovery for enforcement actions, and short-term rentals operating without valid and current permits may be subject to daily citation and penalty, and repeat violations may result in revocation and preclude the ability to reapply for a new permit for 12 months. One of the provisions that was discussed at the Planning Commission hearing that wasn't explicitly incorporated into the code, there's one section that was added that's consistent with what was discussed at the Planning Commission but wasn't codified, clarifying how this applies to new applications in renewals. So there's one section added that clarifies that any new application would need to comply with all provisions, and that renewals, if they were already approved based on the existing spacing standards, parking requirements, and the provisions for how many sleeping rooms were allowed, they would continue to be able to operate under those provisions as they were originally approved, as long as they keep that permit active. But it, with renewals, they would need to comply with those new kind of operational standards that were discussed on the previous slides. I already talked through the amendments to the Northeast Gateway, but just again, the provisions would change for those residential zones within the Northeast Gateway that were previous, would previously need to go through a conditional use permit process, subject to conditional use permit criteria. That would be changed to requiring them to comply with the short-term rental standards, all those provisions, including the spacing standards, as if they were any other residential zone, whether or not they're in the Northeast Gateway Overlay. I should clarify the, when we talk about the short-term rental provisions, there are no changes to the regulations for resident occupied short-term rentals where there's a permanent resident living in the home and renting out a portion of the home. That's not changed at all, and these do not affect lodging in commercial zones, whether they're small-scale lodging or larger-scale lodging. And I'll show some graphics in a moment, some mapping too. Just by way of some of the background information, some of the, going back to the adoption of the MacTown 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan, there's an action item in there to look at and evaluate short-term rentals to balance those issues of impacts on neighborhoods with tourism. Mentioned that the moratorium and the extension that currently runs through the end of June. With the proposed ordinance, if enacted, that a moratorium would end with the adoption, 30 days from adoption of the ordinance, so about a week earlier than the end of June. And then the Planning Commission did hold a series of work sessions and worked through these issues, did hear from, from interested parties to, as they worked through issues, looked at best practices and standards from a variety of other communities and coming up with their recommendation. Just for reference, the, this is a map that shows existing short-term rentals kind of in the downtown core area as of roughly September of 2022. Anything that's shown in magenta is an existing short-term rental. The black outline, the circle around those shows what a 200-foot spacing standard looks like, and then the lots that are shaded in gray are those that would not be eligible today. If those, all those short-term rentals that are existing remain in place, the gray lots would be ineligible for short-term rental. The other properties would be eligible if they're in the respective residential zones. And then the red is overlaid there to show the commercial zoning, so lodging would be allowed in there, and spacing standards wouldn't apply relative to the commercial zones. If the standards are increased to 500 feet, this shows the difference, again, in gray lots that would be ineligible for new short-term rentals, as long as the existing rentals stayed in place. This is a wider city, citywide, UGB-wide view. There's probably a couple places where this shows tax lots at the edge of the UGB that wouldn't be affected if it extends beyond the city limits. That's currently what the spacing standards look like. Again, dark gray indicates those lots that are ineligible based on a 200-foot spacing standard, and what that would look like with a 500-foot spacing standard. Just for some sense of, kind of a sense of comparison between 200 and 500 feet, this, I just want to disclaim that this shows if you put a grid in place, everything was uniformly spaced. This didn't account for existing short-term rentals, property lines, geographic features, and things like that. That's what, you know, essentially every, if you put these in an X-Y grid, what 200-foot spacing looks like in an area, kind of the area west of downtown. Again, the full saturation of what would be actually achieved depends on property lines and things like that. But for comparison, that shows within that kind of highlighted area about 72 units compared to, if you did the same thing with a 500-foot spacing standard, about 20 units. So that's not considering any existing rentals. It's just trying to give you a comparison and put it on a map to give you a sense of scale as to what that looks like. During the Planning Commission hearing, we did have some testimony. We had some inquiries from citizens as well, asking about how the provisions would apply to existing short-term rentals. So I just want to go through some of the questions that came up and the answers. I've touched on this already. If someone's submitting a new application after the moratorium, all the new provisions would apply. If there's an existing short-term rental, if it has an active permit and retains that permit, could continue to operate its current location, provided it remains current, doesn't expire, doesn't have a change in ownership. It would be the new spacing standards, parking requirements, and limitations on sleeping rooms would not apply. It would continue to be subject to those provisions that were in effect at the time the permit was approved, but they would be subject to some of those sort of operational enforcement standards that were described. If the permit were to expire or ownership would change, which causes it to expire, then a new permit application would be reviewed for compliance with all the new standards in the same manner as any new, other new application. We had some testimony from homeowners associations or members of homeowners associations, had different testimony indicating that they thought HOA should be involved in the enforcement of regulations governing short-term rentals, and as we discussed at the Planning Commission hearing, I want to make sure it's clear that there's sort of a bright line between homeowners association enforcing any private covenants and contractual requirements, which they would continue to do. The city doesn't enforce those, but the HOAs would not be involved in administration or enforcement of this ordinance, which is a public law. So those are two distinct things, one the city addresses and one an HOA addresses. So those would not overlap. And that's our, the presentation I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me. Again, the Planning Commission recommendations for approval, finding that the applicable criteria are satisfied, and then looking at the range of policy options. Essentially, they found that the proposal implements the policy that balances those issues of neighborhood compatibility and accommodation of tourism. So.
Thank you very much. Does any counselor have questions for staff at this time?
Thank you, Tom. Could you pull the maps back up that show the, the 2 and the 500 of the city? Yeah, that one, and then just, sorry, just give me a second, please. Okay, and then can you go to the 500, please? Okay, thank you.
And those are based on existing?
Correct.
Yep. And then, do you mind ending the screen share, just so I can see if other counselors want to speak? Thank you so much. Any other questions for staff at this time? Nope. Thank you. So we will now start to hear public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We'll start with those who signed up in advance. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. And Claudia, has anyone signed up to testify this evening?
Yes, Mark Davis.
Thank you. Please welcome. And do we have the timer for Zoom?
Yes.
Great. All right, welcome. Please put your name and address for the record.
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street, here in McMinnville. I'm in favor of the ordinance. I spoke in favor of the Planning Commission. I mean, I, I wish they would have tried to tackle the, the short-term rentals in the commercial area, but that's much more complicated, and I understand why they chose not to move in that direction. I'd like to make a couple other comments related to this. One is, staff report mentioned that there were 63 of these, and I know that sounds like a small number to a lot of people, but, you know, in a previous life, I, I developed affordable housing, and I can tell you that 63 units of affordable housing would be, you know, very expensive and very time-consuming process to generate. So even though it doesn't sound like a lot of units, it has, it's having an impact on the affordable housing supply in our community. Beyond that, the, the general, and I hate to use the word, but I'm going to throw it out there, gentrification of our neighborhoods is, is having an impact on affordable housing in general. I mean, I, I live close to downtown. You know, I've seen the 12-unit apartment complex on our block that used to be Section 8 be upscaled. I mean, I appreciate them fixing it up, but now it's too, you know, it's expensive housing. We've had two large houses in our neighborhood sell to out-of-state owners who have declared intention to create bed and breakfast. I mean, we're seeing, you know, all around the neighborhood, you know, people fixing up things, you know, some of them go to short-term rentals, some of them go to other uses, but I mean, it's, it's definitely having, having an impact. I mean, our neighborhood, you know, used to be low to, you know, low income, middle income, you know, it's now becoming much higher income, and it's a, I think it's a real challenge to the city. We've got to find a place to, to cite affordable housing, and the places like where we live used to be that housing, it's no longer there. So I support, you know, passing this ordinance, but I, I hope that this is not the end of your discussion about the issues around this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Does any counselor need anything clarified regarding this testimony?
I do need one point of clarification, if you don't mind, Tom. Mr. Davis brought up Airbnbs. In 2012, I believe, when the, at the time, short-term vacation rentals were regulated the same as, not Airbnbs, B&amp;Bs, they were regulated the same as B&amp;Bs, and that was the 660-foot spacing standard. Is that still the spacing standard for B&amp;Bs? And if so, was that discussed at all at Planning Commission and any conversation about making those two, those two the same?
There was no discussion about making those two the same. B&amp;Bs are predominantly allowed in residential zones only in, I believe, the R4 zone and the OR zone as conditional uses, so they're not allowed in the other zones. And with the conditional use permit criteria, there aren't spacing standards, but they are subject to conditional use criteria, so they're not listed as a permitted use subject to sort of those objective standards.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for public testimony?
No.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to provide testimony at this time? Please come up. Welcome. How are you this evening?
Thank you, Mayor.
Good.
My name is Jim Kreuzbender, 1317 Northeast 9th Street. I live a block east, all my neighborhoods, east of Lafayette Avenue, and the Northeast Gateway District Zone is, Zone 3 is on the east side of Lafayette Avenue. There's a Zone 1, Third Street area, Zone 2, west of Lafayette Avenue. But I'm here mainly supporting the 500-foot distance, but also the ordinance of 4971, encompassing the Northeast Gateway District. I got into this because a house across the street from me turned into a STR. Used to be a family of six living there, and it was one of the last houses before the moratorium, but there are two others, STRs popped up in my neighborhood. And we're close to downtown, and it's old neighborhood, 1950s, 60s houses. So, but when this STR went in there, the city gives you a map of all the STRs in the, in the city for a neighborhood meeting with the new owners. Well, this one house was, I knew it was an STR, wasn't on the map. And so I researched it, and it wasn't 200 feet from another STR, and such and such. So I finally went to the planning department, and I was told, well, this is in Zone 3 of the Gateway District, you know, and it gets a conditional use permit for lodging. So theoretically, these houses were two blocks of houses south of Cook School, from Lafayette to Logan Street, between 4th and 5th, 16 houses, and one of them was an STR. And so, as this lodging, and theoretically, all these houses could be turned into STRs. And then there's another small block north of the school administration building, has five- school administration building, has five houses there. And so, since the moratorium is for saving houses for residents, citizens, and local people, I asked the planning commission about this, about the 500-foot distance between STRs, or these homes in these Gateway districts. And I also stepped off the rest of my neighborhood and looked at it and saw that there could be like 10 or 15 more STRs in my little neighborhood there between 3rd and 10th Street and Lafayette, down to Oregon Street. So I hope that you pass this ordinance along with the 500-foot distance between STRs, because our neighborhood is just starting to get impacted when this moratorium went into effect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like, does any counselor, I'm sorry, does any counselor have questions on this testimony? Thank you. Would anyone else in the gallery like to testify this evening? Would anyone on Zoom like to testify? If so, please use the raise your hand feature or send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros. And do we have anyone on the phone? All right. Well, in that case, our public testimony is concluded for the evening. Does the staff have anything that they would like to add to the record at this time? Or does city council have any additional questions for city staff?
I just note that Bill Kabeisman is on Zoom if you have any questions for him as well.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any additional questions, I will close the public hearing. And we will revisit that towards the end of the meeting. We're now going to have a presentation from Visit McMinnville, presenting their annual report. So if you'd like to join us up here, that would be wonderful. Thank you. I also brought peonies for everybody to take home, which I forgot to say earlier. So when you come up, if you'd like to grab a peony to take home, please do.
Mayor, city councils, city staff, thank you for having us here tonight. We are excited to be here. I need to state my name for the record. Jeff Knapp, 1036 Northeast Cowell. And I'm here with
My name is Kitri McGuire, and I reside at 220 Northeast 6th Street.
We are really excited to be here to talk to you this evening. We thought we'd kick it off with an internal communications video that we've made about our work that we can share with both you and the city and whoever's interested in the work that we do. So if, I'll turn it over to Claudia to press play.
We're an economic development organization that is guiding the development of McMinnville through leveraging the visitors that come here and spend money with our local businesses. We take those resources and help deploy them to make the community a better place and shepherd the quality of life here.
Visit McMinnville puts into place creative marketing and advertising programs, communications, partnerships, community development programs that help both visitors and locals have an amazing experience in McMinnville.
So Visit McMinnville is funded through transient lodging tax. It is a tax on visitors that are spending time in our hotels and vacation rentals.
It's not a tax on locals. It is a tax from visitors that supports what we do here.
70% of those taxes go to fund our efforts, and 30% go to our city's general fund to help support the growing needs of our community.
We're encouraging spending that wouldn't otherwise happen in our local businesses that support our friends and neighbors.
The visitor economy is definitely an economic driver. I'm happy to see the growth of that. And I've seen that in the bottom line of my personal business as well.
It has absolutely helped the growth of my business. It's made a very large difference.
You're probably most familiar with our marketing and communications. You might see that out in billboards, or magazines, or social media. There's another side of what we do, too, and that's destination development.
Some of the programs that we put into place include EV stations, bike repair stations, trails, community programs, murals. These are all things that make our community a more lovable and vibrant place.
So it's not using citizens' dollars, but the benefit overall is for the whole community.
One of my favorite projects is the creation of a publication. Crush is Visit McMinnville's arts and culture publication that we produce monthly in both English and Spanish. We are one of four economic development organizations in McMinnville. Our primary partner is the city of McMinnville. And our other economic development partners are the Downtown Association, the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, and the Chamber of Commerce.
A lot of what we do at Visit McMinnville is shepherding change. So we work proactively with both data and heart to ensure that the decisions and the investments we're making set us up to be a diverse community with diverse people. It's critical that we have more than just food and wine, that we're a well-rounded community that has a lot to offer. And Visit McMinnville is dedicated to help shepherd those things and bring them to life.
Visitors are going to come, and if we're able to manage them and help guide them, it's better for all of us.
You know, we're in the relationship business here at Visit McMinnville, and we have a strong team of creative people who care very deeply about the work they do. I love what we do here because we have a community that cares hard and cares deeply. And we get to make a big difference with the way that we care and how we show up.
So we are happy to talk to you about how we care and how we show up. And we're excited to cover a few things with you tonight. It is our annual fiscal year plan and budget presentation. We've had the most impactful year yet as an organization, and that is due to quite a few different things. Increase in resources, but most importantly, good strategic planning and amazing humans. So we deploy, we employ and deploy a very, an amazing team of people. And we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. So we're going to kick off tonight with a little bit, some data from Steve Halaz. So Steve is a data analyst and specialist that we work with to bring information about the state of the visitor economy and both on some trends on a regional and national level, and then what that means for us. We're going to go into a report about last year's performance and the successes that we've had and what we've accomplished over the last year. And then we'll end with a presentation on what we're focusing on moving forward and what that budget looks like. So I'm going to kick off the presentation, going over again who we are. We cultivate the visitor economy in McMinnville to enhance the quality of life for our community. We are a 501(c)(6). These are the vision and mission and values that drive our organization. And I really, the value statements, I think, really say a lot about our work. Developing and nurturing collaborative partnerships, I think, is the key to our successes. Embracing innovation and possibility, operating transparently, inclusively, and equitably, and honoring our community. We use three different lenses to look at our work. Economic development, which we are an economic development organization. Our goal is to bring more economic impact to our community and transfer that into quality of life. We look at our identity, how we represent our community outward in the world and internally to ourselves. And then stewardship, how do we responsibly move our community forward in a balanced, thoughtful manner? This does not, whoop, here we go. We are a board-run organization. We have an amazing list of board members that oversee our work. These are some of the faces that you may or may not know, but if you don't know them, you should. We are honored to work with city manager Jeff Towery. And Adam Garvin is our current council liaison. Jenny Berg is also stepping in to participate when she can. And we'd like to tip our hat to Counselor Minkie for all of her years of service with our organization and getting us off the ground. It is a diverse board of different tourism stakeholders and citizens at large that oversee and govern our work. Most importantly, is the team of amazing human beings that we get to work with every day and how we are doing that work. I'd like to call, if they're here, Jamie and, James and Lee, and of course, you know, Kitri. These people are dedicated not just to their job, but they are deeply vested in the community. And that's us, out there working in involvement with, not just on the visitor economy, but on the Adopt a Road program with the city that we kicked off. So I want to let you know that it takes a great team to do this great work. Now I'm going to start, kick it over to Steve Halaz. Steve is the founder and CEO of Blue Room Research. One of the things that you heard us say on the video is that we do things with data and heart. Steve helps us with the data. And I'm going to let him take over and give you a little overview of what's happening in the world of the visitor economy as it pertains to McMinnville and the greater scope. And then open it up to any data questions you might have of Steve prior to moving on. Steve?
Thanks so much, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me okay. But as Jeff said, I'm founder and CEO of Blue Room Research, based up in Portland, and couldn't make it there tonight unfortunately, so I'm having to zoom in. I do apologize. A little bit about Blue Room Research. We work with a number of destinations around the country to assist them with all of their market research, data analytics, reporting, and strategy needs. And Jeff asked me to speak briefly here tonight to everyone about the kinds of tourism trends that we're seeing both in McMinnville currently and also around the country. And so I'd like to start with some hotel metrics to kind of zoom in on what's been happening in McMinnville recently. We buy our hotel data from a company called Smith Travel Research, or STR for short. And just as a side note, this data does not include the Atticus Hotel or the Tributary Hotel, so that is not included in this data So looking at a couple years in review here, 2021, '22, and Q1 of 2023, this shows occupancy at McMinnville hotels, and a really, really strong year in '21 coming out of COVID, another banner year in 2022, and then a great start to 2023 with a little bit of flattening in February and March. Moving on to average daily rate, that's the rate that a guest pays when they check in and out of a hotel. Again, you see a similar curve, but even more dramatic increase from '21 into '22. And then 2023, by all counts, shaping up to be another banner year as far as average daily rate goes in McMinnville, most recently in March with an average daily rate of $138 per night. And so when you combine those two metrics of occupancy, how many people are actually coming and staying in the hotels, plus paying a higher rate, you get to look at revenue. Again, strong year in '21 and '22, and really, really strong performance in Q1 of 2023 as well. Record-breaking years in January, February, a little bit flat in March, but so far, really, really strong performance to the year so far in Q1. Moving on to short-term rental data, and this is listings that can be found on Airbnb and Verbo. We buy this data through a company called AirDNA. This shows total available listings in McMinnville. And you really see a dramatic increase in number of available listings within McMinnville from '21 to present, with a record-breaking year of 165, or month, pardon me, 165 available short-term rentals for the consumer to purchase in April of 2023.
I'll jump in real quick and make a quick note on that. That is, that also includes rentals in the McMinnville zip code, not necessarily strictly the city of McMinnville. They don't separate the data that way. But I would say it's probably an 80/20 roughly. Steve, you can help me out with that, but I just wanted to call that out.
Yeah, great point, Jeff. It's about, I'd say, 85% within McMinnville proper, and then a few out in the surrounding areas, but all fall into that greater zip code of And then very similar kind of curves you've seen from the previous data of hotel data. Great years in '21 and '22, starting off strong in January, a little bit of flattening through February, March, and April. And a lot of that just has to do with occupancy. You know, whenever you have more units to fill, it takes more demand to fill those units to make the same amount of occupancy. And so we have seen a slight flattening, but I think that's largely due to the rapid increase in supply. Average daily rate, really, really been performing strongly. Last month in April, $280 a night was the average daily rate. And I expect this number to continue to move up and to the right, especially as we get into a full summer season here starting next month. Again, looking at revenue, so combining that occupancy with the amount of people are actually paying at those units, record-breaking year so far through April. And I expect this number to continue as well. I think short-term rentals, really, really here to stay, moving out of COVID. And I expect these numbers to only escalate as we get into the prime summer season. Next, we'd like to shift gears a little bit and look at some consumer sentiment data. And this is basically how American travelers are feeling about the economy, about travel, about all the things that kind of fall into those categories. And we partner with a number of firms, but we're going to show you some most recent surveys tonight from Longwoods International and Destination Analysts. And so both of these companies survey on a monthly basis. And the first question they asked was, would you say that you and your household are better off or worse off financially than you were a year ago? And as you can see, in the past couple months, we've taken a little bit of a turn. So travelers aren't feeling quite as good about their current financial situation as they were just a few months ago. And as you know, in the past few months, you know, fears of recession have heightened, more Fed hikes, regional bank failures, been a lot in the, in the news lately about some, you know, potential headwinds on the US economy. Recession, I don't think you can watch a newscast anywhere these days without hearing the fear of recession. And this is the percent of respondents that said they expect a recession within the next six months. And so ever since February, you really be seeing an up and to the right increase there. We continue to watch this very, very carefully, because as this number goes up, people do tend to pull back on their travel plans and also their spending as well. Next, you know, whenever you have a recession on the loom, people tend to be a little bit more conservative or careful with their money. And 60, over 60% of respondents said that they are agreeing with the statement. They're being a little bit more carefully, careful with their money than they typically would, because they are concerned about that upcoming Inflation, also been a really hot topic throughout the past six, eight, 12 months. Asking people if they agree or not with the statement. High travel prices have kept me from traveling within the past month. So very, very kind of a near timeline here, but over 45% of those respondents said they do agree with that statement. And as you can see on the graph on the right, this number has really jumped up ever since February. And we'll continue to monitor this very carefully as well. To me, this is the most shocking slide of my presentation. The statement was, recent inflation and consumer prices has led me to cancel an upcoming trip. And almost a third of respondents said they agree with that statement. So not only people are fearful about what's happening, but it's leading them to actually cancel a trip that they had on the books, which is a little bit worrisome. And we'll continue to watch this number very carefully. Also, you may have seen in the news wildfires up in Canada, smoke being seen in Montana, and a lot of Western states. You know, over the past few years, it's been a really, really several rough wildfire seasons. And all of us in Oregon know that very, very well. But wildfires continue to be a problem in the Western United States. And this is very, very top of mind for a lot of consumers that are planning trips out and about in the Western And what all this has led to, you know, fear of recession, economic headwinds, wildfires, any kind of negative news, has led to a shortening in booking windows. And so the question was, how many weeks in advance did you begin planning your most recent overnight trip? And I believe this number is at an all-time low as far as length of day between booking the trip and actually going on that trip. Almost 55% of respondents said they started planning that trip four weeks or less. And this is a trend not only being seen in McMinnville or even in Oregon, but around the country. Booking windows on almost every destination I work with has really seen a very, very dramatic drop in that booking window. So people are just holding on and not making those travel plans like they once were, really, really far out in the future. But not all bad news. You know, a lot of good news to go. And I think you're seeing a very strong push-pull in the mind of the American consumer, because they still want to travel. They do have plans. They're still making plans. And in fact, 91% of respondents said they do have travel plans within the next six months. And as you can see, ever since 2020, this is basically at an all-time high. Next, some more good news. Coronavirus is largely out of the, out of the minds of the American consumer. Only 13% indicated that coronavirus would greatly impact their decision to travel over the next six months. So great news that hopefully, fingers crossed, COVID is largely behind us. And then last, my favorite slide in the presentation, which best is Which best describes how excited you are about leisure travel in the next 12 months? And it's at an all-time high. So Americans really do have the desire to travel. They're just waiting a little bit longer to kind of pull that trigger and actually take that trip. So to wrap it all up, you know, at the consumer sentiment and macroeconomic trend level, excitement around travel is at an all-time high. However, their very real concerns are on recession and general economic weakness in the U.S. economy. And travelers specific to Western states are very concerned and have wildfires on top of mind. And as a result, destinations, both McMinnville, Oregon, and Nationwide, are all seeing shorter booking windows for the summer and fall. Specific to McMinnville, average daily rate at both hotels and short-term rentals remains elevated in 2023. I expect this trend to continue for the remainder of the year. However, those recent increases in lodging supply, coupled with normal seasonality, you know, we always see that dip in the wintertime in Oregon, did create a little bit of a dip in occupancy for Q1 2023. And again, likely this is compounded by that really, really large number of total available listings, an all-time high in April. I also think we're seeing a little bit of subsiding pent-up demand from that after-COVID travel where it's kind of starting to normalize once again. A lot of macroeconomic concerns in the news every single day. And unfortunately, just a really rainy spring in Oregon, I think, all contributed to the decrease in occupancy demand for Q1. Also, and I'll let Jeff speak to this a little bit more in a second, there's some new hotels coming online in kind of the medium term in McMinnville. And in the short term, a lot of RV slips, and that could also challenge occupancy as well in the future because with an increase in supply, you need an increase in demand to match it to maintain that same level of occupancy. But total revenue collected in hotels and short-term rentals remains at an all-time high, and I expect those numbers to be good throughout the end of the year. So happy to open it up to any questions you have or turn it back over to Jeff if he had some add-ons to any of the comments I've made.
Thanks, Steve. Does council have any direct questions regarding data?
Council President Garvin?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to point a clarity on the short-term rental data. I know Jeff called out that it's McMinnville zip code, but I was curious if that data had also been scrubbed for duplicates between VRBO and Airbnb by AirDNA or if there could be duplicates in that given the vast difference in the number of what planning commission just presented as their short-term rental permits versus what this data presents as short-term rentals in the McMinnville area?
Yeah, great question. AirDNA does deduplicate, and we can actually see in the data set which listings are available on Airbnb, which ones are available on Verbo, and then which are actually co-listed. I don't have that number right in front of me, but there is a decent number as far as percentage goes of units that are listed on both Airbnb and Verbo, which is pretty typical in this day and age for most destinations. There's a lot of crossover between those platforms. But AirDNA does duplicate, deduplicate the listings, so we know exactly how it is, and the metrics are only being counted once.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes, Senior Planner Tom Shower?
I can also add, as part of the analysis we did on short terminals, we overlaid some of the Airbnb data over our zoning. And a lot of items that are listed on Airbnb and VRBO are some of those that are in commercial zones as well as outside of the city limit. So the number that we have is short-term rentals in residential zones is a subset of those total Airbnb and Verbo listings that are commercial, residential, and in the zip code outside the city.
Thank you. My guess is everyone on council caught the inconsistency there, so thank you for clarifying that for us, everybody. Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Are we able to keep moving forward with the presentation?
Yes, you're able to keep moving forward with the presentation. I did have one question. On the second slide on average rates, I believe it was the second slide, the one that said that Atticus and Tributary weren't included in that. I'm assuming that that's because they're generally at higher rates, and so you felt it would have skewed the data. Is that why they were excluded? No, well, that's why I'm not supposed to make assumptions. So perfect, thank you.
The company that we work with, Smith Travel Research, which is the industry standard, requires hotels to participate. So you'd have to engage in those services, and those properties do not report out. So the hotels that are opting to report out, we have that data, and those hotels choose not to report.
Okay. And on your first slide, did that show general occupancy rates? I didn't get a good look at that slide before it moved forward. And I know it's in the packet too, and it's in the email, but...
Go back to that real quick.
Yeah, that's, just that one. That's perfect, occupancy. Thank you. Right, appreciate it. Okay, any additional questions? Councilor Payne?
Thank you. The sample set of the average American traveler, what does that look like? Like, can that demographic be pared down a little bit, please?
So I believe that's fourth. They do each survey, they run 4,000 sample size, so it's a pretty good number so they can get statistical significance. And then if we want to, we can break out some of those charts by region, age, demographics, things of that nature. This is their proprietary data that they share outwardly, so we can do some additional data cuts, but we don't have access to all of the raw data to do exactly what we want with. But it is statistically significant sample size and also mirrors the American populace with regards to key demographics. So it is a truly representative sample.
Thank you. Thank you. Please go on.
All right, thank you. Find where we're at here. So we'll jump in now to our fiscal year '23 recap. And before I begin, I just want to recall last year, our meeting with you and our intention of moving forward and executing and diversifying our work. So traditionally, we started as a destination marketing organization. Our primary goal and drive was to tell, to inspire folks to visit and spend dollars here. And as we have morphed and grown in resources, we have put more effort into destination development investments. And I think that we'll start with those and what that looked like from last year. So organizationally, we worked on, we achieved four pretty large things. We expanded our team to bring on our first, another member for our marketing and communications team, Lee McCollins, who is a stellar addition. We couldn't think of not having Lee with us, and we've been able to accomplish so much more by increasing our human power. We've operated with our board to go through succession planning as we are terming through our first, you know, we were established in 2015. Board term limits are three-year service with three potential, two other potential re-ups. We are moving into new territory with brand-new board makeup. And we took our board and staff through DEI training, and we intend to move forward and continue to do that work. We also were able to secure a new home site as our team has grown and our work has grown, so has our need for space. So we have solidified a new office space to do that work. We understand that change and how we work and how communities' needs change. We know that the data to support our work is super important. So we partnered with the Oregon State University and the Sustainable Tourism Lab to embark on a three-year study of consumer, or excuse me, of resident sentiment here in McMinnville. And that process, we just kicked off in the last six months. We had folks here during UFO Fest to engage public, and this will consist of community surveys, both digital and in person, as well as a focus group that will follow us over the next three years to talk about how they view the visitor economy and the impact on their lives and to, you know, really serve as a guide, further guide to our work. Outdoor recreation is a large focus for our development work. We look at what other things can we bring that bring quality of life to our community, but also attract visitors. This year, we officially stood up, helped stand up a nonprofit called Cycle Yamhill County. They're official 501(c)(3) organization, and we've worked on several different projects. We held a destination-ready Travel Oregon Partner-led destination analysis to look at our strengths and potential opportunities for our area. We worked collaboratively with county and city members at the Parks and Rec. Susan Muir participated in that. We identified three major priorities that seemed, that would focus our work over the next small amount of time. One, we looked at Quarry Park, and I think we've talked about this before. We feel like there is an opportunity to activate Quarry Park, and we completed an impact analysis on that as well as a parking and traffic analysis. We work, we are currently in a project with the Bureau of Land Management talking about securing access for mountain bike trails just outside of our town between here and Carlton. We also worked with a consultant to work collaboratively with Cycle Yamhill County to outline and highlight gravel routes that were safe and that we could promote. So we have come up with a signage plan and are working with, working to get signs the type there on the right to be deployed to help provide direction and safe navigation routes by which we can direct folks to safely explore the wondrous nature that is close to our community. We're also engaged in a conversation with the, sorry, I'm losing my thoughts right now. The state, the Marine Board, it's right there, to explore use of the Yamhill River. So the State Marine Board has looked at the river as a potential asset for expansion of access and connecting communities, and we are actively at the table looking at different recreation opportunities around the river. We installed our third mural. So one of the things for us in the community is to make it a vibrant place, also to add attractive wayfinding to bring folks through our urban renewal district. And we worked with public art to see the mural that you see installed there right across from the Boutique Retreat Hotel. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Kitchry to talk about our accomplishments around marketing and communications.
Hi, Mayor Drabkin and councilors. I'm really excited to talk about marketing and communications that we do here at Visit McMinnville. And to start, I want to thank James Howe and Lee McCollins, who are here with us and work very hard on telling the story of McMinnville. So I'm going to go through some of these accomplishments from last year and show some visuals. I need, yeah, oh, there's a delay. Okay. First, we started off with a brand-new marketing campaign. And what a campaign is, is a collection of visuals and stories that really tell visitors what they can expect in McMinnville. This campaign was called Meet Us in McMinnville, and the visuals were inspired by, I don't know about you guys, but when I go on trips, I like to have a map and I like to make notes and put little doodles on it and circle places I want to try. And so we utilized sort of that visual of really exploring a destination into a combination of visuals with people here. So Meet Us in McMinnville is a play on words. We want to make sure that people are meeting their friends and loved ones in McMinnville. And also, we want them to meet us and learn more about what makes McMinnville special. Here are some of the places that you can see some of our ads that we created. We have these placements in digital locations, social, in print ads, what they call out-of-home, which are things like billboards. We also have video content on TV and YouTube, and we also created some of our visuals in Spanish as well. We showcase these visuals and tell the stories of McMinnville primarily in the Portland and Seattle DMAs, which are marketing areas that surround major metropolitan areas. It's really important that we focus our spending on advertising to make sure that we are reaching people who are most likely to come here. Portland and Seattle are our primary visitation markets. And especially with an investment in Seattle, we are reaching people who are coming here from a drive market that is just a little too far away to spend a day trip. So it encourages them to stay in our hotels and spend money on, in our stakeholder businesses as well. This year, we utilized the services of a new PR agency called Field Day PR. We changed our PR focus a little bit. Before, we were marketing and telling the stories of basically all of McMinnville. And what would happen is it was just too much, too much going on. We were telling too many stories, and the media was getting a little overwhelmed. So what we've started to do is work on small projects at a time, pushing new restaurant launches, pushing the Granery District businesses, and really doing hyper-focused messaging to the media. And that's really resulted in a lot more quality media coverage for us over the last year. We've been mentioned in The New York Times, in Time Magazine. There's been a lot of really wonderful placements, and it's wonderful to support our local businesses through the stories we can tell in the media. Oh, there it goes. Here we go. Okay, we also created a community map. You should have a copy of it there on your dais. We created these in both English and Spanish. And we have a map of our downtown core and granery districts, which are the primarily visited spots in McMinnville. And then on the back, we have a regional map as well as listings of local events. Like I said in the video, Crush is one of my favorite projects that we work on. And again, I want to call out James Howe on our team, who is the editor of Crush and manages all of the amazing stories that we tell in there, and also Lee McCollins, who is our designer. And this is really a local publication. We tell positive stories of amazing things that are happening in our community, and we utilize local writers and artists to help us tell those stories. Here's just some of those stats, but we're really excited to let you know that we produce over 11,000 copies of this a month, and it goes to 40 different local distribution sites. We make sure that all of the schools have them, including Lynnfield and Shemecata. And what's fun about this publication is on one side, it's in English, and if you flip it over, it's the same exact content in Spanish, so we can reach a broader segment of our community. Some of the fun stuff that we work on includes great features of our local businesses. These are some examples of vertical video that we've created over this past year to capitalize on trends in social media and get people engaged in stories of our local business owners. So we do these quite often, and we showcase them on every major platform. These were showcased on, in a series over the last year. Is included a showcase of our McMinnville AVA wineries, a showcase of businesses during the holiday season. And then on the right, there is another example of one of our local McMinnville AVA wineries. These tell really fun stories. Some of you may have seen the really popular one about the McMinnville Short Film Festival that went around that went locally viral, I'm going to say, and it was very cute. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to look it up. We also support local events. These can be a major draw for our community, and we put more resources towards events that are happening in the fall and winter months when we need more visitation. We're excited to announce that we are also bringing events, new events, to our community when we need it. So one of the events that we'll be bringing to our community this year in mid-fall is Bike MS. And they will be bringing 1,000 cyclists to our community to do both a one-mile ride for riders who need assistance, and then they'll be doing a 100-mile ride up into the coast range and back. And we're really excited to welcome them to our community. So now we're going to go over some of our plans for... So now we're going to go over some of our plans for next fiscal year. And I'm just going to quickly go over some of our plans for marketing and communications, and then I'll pass it over to Jeff to talk about organizational and destination development plans. This next year, we're going to continue with our targeted and data-driven advertising in those digital, social, print, out-of-home placements. We're going to continue to tell creative storytelling in the media, so we're going to continue to utilize the services of Field Day PR to tell those stories to local publications. We're going to build out an internal communications plan that includes an expansion of Crush, among other efforts, to make sure that the locals understand the value of what the tourism economy can do for their local businesses. We're going to work on strategic partnerships. So we sit on lots of different boards, actually, and we're going to work with all of those organizations to try and continue to attract local events and tell the story of McMinnville and increase visitor spending in our local businesses. And then we're going to create more of those beautiful assets for social media, digital, and search placements. And then we have several boring but necessary internal projects that we're going to do. Some of you have probably heard about the switch to Google Analytics 4, as well as expansion of AI in search, and we intend to do research into how Visit McMinnville can stay ahead of those trends and make sure that we are following best practices for advertising and utilizing tax dollars in the best way we can for our community.
Thanks. I'm going to go through each of these destination development strategic priorities visually and talk through each one of them for you. So this is the program that I'm most excited about this year, new program, I should say. And this is a critical partnership between our organization and the Downtown Association. Actually, I would say it's beyond the Downtown Association. So we know that the downtown and really the urban renewal district are our main drivers for visitation. It's the main use, the main places that people visit and come and spend time. And we also know that they have, those spaces have growing needs, and with growing needs, take means more need for resources. And we know that our resources are growing, and how we show up and partner is really important. We have decided to set, stand up a program called Hello McMinnville, and what Hello McMinnville will be is a community ambassador and volunteer coordination program to help serve our most highly traffic spaces in our community. Our plan is to bring on a project manager to stand up this program and work with our community partners to deploy humans on the ground, to engage visitors with a friendly smile and face and share information with them while they're visiting, also to be an extra pair of eyes on the street, you know, as, in case there's need out there that we could maybe come to the table with and help also give positive information to those visitors. In addition, we'll be helping coordinate volunteers to support things like the plants and sidewalks and all other types of things. So we're excited to get this set up right away, and we are actively going to be interviewing for that position and working collaboratively with our partners. We are also planning an economic development peer share trip, and this idea comes from, we hear quite often, well, we don't want to turn out to be NAPA. Well, what does that mean? That you don't want to turn out to be NAPA? So in the effort of looking forward with a sustainability lens and making sound decisions and knowing where we are as a destination, we are planning a delegation of our board and staff and city staff and potentially our mayor on a visit south to meet with destination development organizations and their peers that work within the cities and communities down there to ask questions. What could you have done differently? What's working? What should we, what could we be doing differently? So we're excited about this proactive trip. We are actively currently working with the city on identifying possible EV stations, and we have identified grants and funding to help stand these up in the community, and we continue to, we intend to help move that forward and act as a partner with the city to, to provide the growing need for EV transportation. We are behind the curve on being able to meet the demands that we have from visitors, and we feel this would be a really good way to come to the table as a partner. Hospitality workforce is the most critical, workforce and housing are the most critical things facing all industry, and we are actively working on supporting career pathways and connecting opportunity to our local workforce, and we intend to continue to build out that support this year. We have several projects in motion, the largest of which is this partnership with the Bureau of Land Management, and we will continue working on those outdoor recreation expansion projects, continuous, continued expansion of arts and culture. We have a project that we're interested in exploring this year. This is a picture of the alleyway behind our building. You may or may not be familiar with that, but we also have this interesting space in the back of our new facility that we're hoping to activate and bring to the community as a resource. Right now, we're researching if that might be able to support arts and culture in our community and what it might take to activate this alleyway with art and improvements that would bring more safe travel through our urban core, and also as we're looking forward to the redoing Third Street in the near future, hopefully, that that happens, that we have safe corridors that are inviting and welcoming to visitors and locals. Of course, we'll continue to be at the table for all the city's priority projects and support for the stable table and with MEVLC, and we are going to invest in increasing our team. We look at our team as building leaders in our community. So our intention is to bring on a destination development manager, a Hello McMinnville manager, and we are, have been chosen to host an AmeriCorps member, part of what is called a RARE program, Resource Assistance for Rural Environments. We will be hosting, starting this September, a college graduate that will enter our community and work with us for a year on the above-mentioned projects, and hopefully, we'll be able to keep them onboard and add them to our community. This is our proposed budget for the fiscal year '24. This is assuming a 10.5% increase over our budget from last year. This is how that breaks down for overhead development, marketing, communications, and staffing. What that looks like as percentages is this chart here. And what that looks like as far as our work is this chart here. So you can see, we've, if you look compared to last year, we are increasing our investment in our work in development significantly, and we intend to continue to do so at a balanced rate. One thing to note is that occupancy is pretty flat, and as we see more rooms coming available and online, we have to generate more demand to keep the engine, to keep, we can't just keep, rates can't just keep increasing. We're lucky that we are, we have strong rates here in our community, but marketing and communication still is a critical component of the work that we do, and we are really working on balancing that out and then taking the resources that we get from executing strong marketing and deploying those development programs on the ground. That's our presentation. Thanks for letting us, I know it's long. We do a lot of stuff.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Before we go to council discussion, I just want to take a moment to thank you for especially taking the lead on the Hello McMinnville program. That's a program we've discussed in here, is an ambassador program for the downtown, and so very much appreciate your work on that. And then you asked the question, what does it mean when we say we don't want to be NAPA? And I think that if I were to answer that, it would mean that our, those that are working in hospitality and agriculture aren't driving an hour to get to work because there's no affordable housing and that we're not inundated with monocultures. So that would be my, that would be my response to what that means. And with those two thoughts, let me go to council for discussion. Maybe we could take down the screen share, just a little easier. Thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments? Counselor Payne.
I have a comment. Thank you for sharing the heart that so many of us feel, and the, like the little video that I'm sure all of you invested in, it was hard not to cry. I think Jeff even got a little bit choked up. But it's just a reminder, I think, of why we're all doing the work that we're doing. And as Mayor Drabkin said, thanks for taking on the Hello McMinnville project. Been excited about something like that for a long time, so I'm excited to see it roll out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Chenoweth.
I'd like to just echo the thank you for all that you guys do. You kind of glossed over a little bit the effort that you guys are involved in collaborating with partners throughout the city. I mean, you put it there, but that's one of the big roles that you're doing throughout the entire city. You're active in everything that's happening. I don't know where I go that I don't see your two names pop up on a committee, or one of your two names pop up on a committee or being involved in the decision-making process. So thank you for being an active part of our community, and thank you for putting our heart out there for others to see.
All right. Thank you for the take homes as well. I hadn't seen the maps. I always read Crush and sometimes mail at places. Oh, thank you very much. Council President.
Yeah, Jeff and Kitri and Visit McMinnville staff, just thanks for the great first year being on the board with you guys. It's been enlightening, to say the least, and just really appreciate that you organically took the direction council gave you last year of looking to pivot more development, seeing that as an industry trend. I just wanted to call out and recognize that because I know that was a sentiment on the dais last year, and you guys went out and found the data and made those data-driven decisions to move forward with that. So thank you for putting in the work and recognizing where we wanted to go in the city.
Thank you, Council President. I would now call for a motion to approve Visit McMinnville's budget and work plan.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Counselor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, signify by saying nay. The budget and work plan has passed unanimously. Thank you so much for your time today and the work you do.
Thanks for allowing us to do it. It really is a gift and a lot of trust, and we take it really seriously. Also, on the Hello McMinnville front, if you have ideas and you want to bring them, or we're open to listening because we're just getting it started.
Thank you. We'll now take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. And if you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise-your-hand feature or send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudius Sinaros, and when your turn is up, we will unmute your mic and announce your name. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes. We'll start with Mark Davis, and I just want to state for the record, Mark submitted a letter I emailed to all council, and it will be made part of the record tomorrow.
Thank you. We're just going to get our timer up. Give us one second, Mark. Oh, it's up. I'm sorry, I can't see it on my screen. Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to comment on the budget process, take off from there. I've really appreciated the thoroughness with which the Budget Committee and council put into going over all the numbers for the city. I mean, I think that's a really important process, and, you know, I wish more of the public were involved in that process, but it is what it is. But I think we need the same sort of consideration for long-term capital needs in the community. You know, we don't lack for plans for things to do. I mean, we had the MACPAC Plan, $140 million. We got the park plan due soon in the Economic Opportunities Analysis. There's included 392 acres of parks that we're supposed to be developing in the next 20 years. Also in that EOA, we have the Community Center and Pool, which is part of the MACPAC. We have an amphitheater. We have an Arts and Cultural Center. We have a Conference Center, Public Market, and Innovation Center. All these were called out in Mactown 2032. They all sound really great. I'm all for at least considering them. I think they're good ideas. We also have a transportation plan that is going to be updated, and I think we have needs. We heard that during the budget, that some of our gas tax money is going to support the bypass, so we need to find a way to figure out how to seal our roads. Anyway, if we had an unlimited supply of money, we have lots of plans, we have ideas and things we could do. The reality is, we don't have an unlimited supply of money. And I think what the city needs is a realistic assessment of where the money is going to come for some of these ideas, so we can prioritize them. You know, it's, I mean, I think there's federal money out there, there's state money out there, grants, but ultimately, we're going to be talking to the voters about bond measures and more taxes. And I think we need to be upfront ahead of this rather than doing these one at a time. I think there's plenty of skills in this room and people who understand these numbers and how these things might work. But I think the public, before we go on with, you know, we're going to have this 50-cent discussion over the next year with the Budget Committee, I think that the public owes an idea of what we're planning for the future, what projects, what things, because those are all going to impact the annual budget, because we got to do more parks maintenance or maintain a new pool or whatever. And I think we need to get these numbers in front of people so they have an opportunity to hear what we're talking about and have a realistic assessment of what we can and cannot do, because quite honestly, I don't think we can do everything that I've heard here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Has anyone else signed up for public comment this evening?
Oh, it's everyone that signed up.
All right. Would anyone in the gallery like to provide additional public comment this evening? Would anyone on Zoom like to provide public comment this evening? And is there anyone on the phone? Thank you. We'll now go to advice and information items, starting with reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. I'll start to my left this evening with Counselor Gary.
Thank you. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. MEVLC did not meet, and Parkway Committee met, and of course, we're all looking at that budget forecast that shows a little extra money that we weren't anticipating being in the budget and trying to figure out ways to convince legislators and federal delegation to fund the projects that we so desperately need. And so that was the bulk of the discussion, focusing strongly on trying to get McDougal funded.
Thank you. Counselor Payne.
Thank you. Landscape Review met last week and approved a bunch of street tree removals for a manufactured home subdivision. There was also a conversation that I felt like was really important among the committee members, and that's that a lot of the population of property owners in McMinnville doesn't know they need to obtain a permit to remove street trees. So if you have a tree that could possibly be in the right of way, please contact the Community Development Center.
Thank you. And Counselor Manke.
Hi. Okay. Last Tuesday, I attended the Willamette Valley Homelessness Conference over in Salem. Very interesting, a number of interesting ideas presented. Actually, our Affordable Housing Committee is doing many of them, but one concept was to join together small urban renewal districts and use that as a means for smaller rural areas to make some headway with incremental housing. I also attended the Ox Ridge Road Discussion about a week ago in regard to follow-up on the large meeting we had probably close to a month ago now about what we were going to do with it, how to develop it. It was a really interesting discussion. Sarah is our chair. Sarah is our chair, and I understand Sid is our vice chair. A lot of good conversation around the quarry area, which I always regard as a really important wildlife area for maybe being a park area. Also, where to place a neighborhood activity center and where to put low-income housing. And then parks were a really interesting discussion throughout. On affordable housing, we're meeting tomorrow. I know already that Katie Curry reporting on restricted property use within Habitat for Humanity, and I'm excited for her to report out on that. Let's see. The Parkway Committee, I just kind of wanted to mention that the McDoodle, McDougal Corners Discussion has been over several months now. They actually had a meeting with the winery people, I think about two months ago, and it was an interesting conversation about what problems were with that particular area. There's a lot of wineries in that area, particularly, I think, at Sobal Blaster. And I think they are actually funded to $4 million, but they actually, to do better improvements, or at least an additional improvement, there's another $4 million that might be in the offering. So we're looking forward to that. Hopefully, it will work out. I'm trying to, oh, okay. The last thing is the YCAP Finance Committee met yesterday, and we discussed the budget, which has been prepared and reviewed now by the Finance Committee. And we are having our board retreat June 22nd at Grand Ron. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Counsel President.
Thank you, Mayor. Airport Commission hasn't met since our last council meeting. YCOM was supposed to meet today, but that meeting got moved to June 13th, which is where we'll have our budget process and adopt our budget the 20th of June. And then the Fire District from the Will of the Voters passed on May 16th. And so we're just waiting for election results to get certified on that. I think roughly 60, 61% for 227 and 53% for 226. So over the next month, we'll work through that process and look forward to formally formalizing the Will of the Voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel President. And I just have my same City of McMinnville drum here to beat regarding the Community Fair on Thursday, May 25th, from 4:00 to 7:00. So I really hope to see you all there. We'll now go to department heads, starting with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Nothing additional to report, Mayor.
Thank you. And interim city attorney, Walt Gowell. Thank you. Senior Planner, Tom Shower.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Anne Pagano.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. City Recorder, Claudius Sineros.
I'll just reiterate what the mayor said. Please come to the Community Fair State of the City address on Thursday.
Thank you so much. And on Zoom, we have our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar.
Nothing to report this evening. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. We will now consider consent agenda. I am going to pull Resolution 2023-28 before considering the vote. Just so I know, we have our appointee on Zoom, and so I want to have an opportunity for her to introduce herself to the council. Does any other counselor wish to have any item removed from the consent agenda? None. I would then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved.
Again.
Or not as presented with 2328 removed.
As edited.
As edited. Thank you. Counselor, a motion from Counselor Payne and a second from Counselor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously. And we will now consider Resolution Number 2023-28, a resolution appointing a volunteer to the Planning Commission. And I'll call on our senior planner, Tom Shower, to present our new appointee. And then also, if you can, thank you, if you can introduce our new appointee on Zoom, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and counselors. We have a vacancy on the Planning Commission. The interview panel interviewed candidates and recommended our, as noted, the resolution to counsel Elena Mudrak, who's joining us by Zoom. So we're, there was a lot of excitement about the interview process, and we're looking forward to moving forward with having Elena join us on Planning Commission.
Thank you. And then I suppose I skipped the voting portion before asking you to introduce yourself. So as a technicality, if you'll hold on one second, could I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-28?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Counselor Gary and a second from Counselor Payne. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Elena, would you please introduce yourself to the council?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, as well as counselors, for having me. Elena Mudrak. I live at 368 Southwest West Hills Drive, McMinnville, and I am looking forward to serving on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And do any counselors have any questions or want to say hello?
Hello.
Hello. All right. Thank you. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for staying with us through an hour and a half of meeting for that introduction. Appreciate it. And thank you for your service to the city of McMinnville going forward. We will now move into our resolutions. Starting to consider Resolution Number 2023-27, a resolution establishing revised sanitary sewer user fees and repealing Resolution 2019-35 and 2022-20. And I would like to call on Leland Costa, our wastewater service manager, to present.
Actually, I'll go ahead and present. Leland is on Zoom for questions. Thank you, Mayor Drabkin. As shown in the staff report, which starts on page 96 of your packet, we are requesting to raise our sewer rates on July 1st, 2023, by 3.5%. Sewer rates have not increased since July 1st, 2019, as we were requested not to increase rates during the pandemic. Our consultant, Deb Galardi, reviewed our financial plan and CIP for the wastewater fund in March of 2022, and that report is in the packet. It was determined that a rate increase is recommended starting July 1st, 2023, with increases of 2.5% per year. After the report was completed, the City Council approved Resolution 2022-20, which increased the wastewater franchise fee from 5% to 6%. Water and Light also started charging the full cost for billing services to our wastewater account, so our water and light charge went from $600 a year to $147,000 a year. We will spread these increases over the next two years of sewer rates. Instead of asking for 4.5% to cover the whole cost this July, we are proposing a 3.5% increase this year and a 3.5% increase next year. We would then follow Deb's recommendation to continue with a 2.5% annual increase after that. So unless there are any questions, staff recommends approving Resolution 2023-27.
Thank you. I'll now look to the council for discussion.
I think I might still be in shock. Did you say $600 a year to $147,000?
That's correct.
Do you want to expand on that for the council?
I think Leland might be able to help us out with that one, but basically, we were getting a very good deal for a while, but with the city services fee, when that went into place, they reallocated their charges to the city, and that's where we ended up for the wastewater service fee that they're charging for us on their bill. Does that sound about right, Leland?
That is correct. And Jennifer may have more detail on that if she's available to answer it. But yes, we were getting an extremely good deal for many years, and we were warned by Water and Light that when we went to go through this study of a new possible stormwater utility in the future to the new city services charge, that these changes would be taking place.
Thank you so much. Any additional discussion or questions? Not hearing any. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-27.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Gary and a second from Counselor Manke. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-29, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022-23 and making supplemental appropriations and contingency transfers. I'd like to call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present. Yes, we see you're on the line, and you need one moment. No problem. You're still muted.
Okay, sorry. Claudie and I are doing it for each other. Okay. So the resolution before you is to enact a supplemental budget for the current year that we're in, fiscal year 2022-23. Oh, goodness, I've got the next thing up. Recology in front of me, sorry. So the statute allows, under ORS 294.471, a government to prepare supplemental budgets when things are new that were not known at the time that the budget was prepared. And as long as the supplemental budget action for each fund involved doesn't exceed 10% of a change in the expenditures, the budget amendment may be done by a council resolution. Further, there's a requirement that if contingencies are involved, you can do it by resolution as well, as long as it doesn't exceed 15%. So those are the underpinnings for why we're allowed to do this. What we propose in our supplemental budget is the following. There are four basic places in the general fund where we would like to increase some appropriations. In the administration fund, we would like to ask for $80,000 in additional funding, primarily due to the extraordinary costs associated with legal support, with both the city attorney position being open, but also just the needs that popped up this year were unusual in number and scope. Then in the finance department, we did not contemplate just the additional costs associated with document production and publication needs for our unusual budget process that we are underway. And so that is a request of $10,000 additional appropriation. Then in the park maintenance area, the, under the ARPA Plan Act that they've got already approved to purchase additional equipment and vehicles, they're able to move faster on some of those things. And so this is within their approved project amount for ARPA, but it's simply in addition to what they had planned for this year, and that's $55,000. Then in the non-departmental, so this just came up in conversation, the city services billing fees and the one-time implementation costs were unknown at the time that we put together the budget last year, and so we're asking for an additional appropriation of $95,000 for that in the general fund. So that's a total of $240,000 in the general fund. And of this amount, oh, I think I have a typo in there, $50,000, but I think it's 55, would be budgeted by ARPA, would be paid for with new ARPA funding, and the balance would require the contingency transfer. So I am also asking for a small increase in the transient lodging tax funds appropriation. Our projections are really close to what we budgeted, but because of, as they mentioned in the Visit McMinnville presentation earlier tonight, just folks are coming here in higher numbers than before. And also, I think the room rate levels are higher than we had projected. So I would like to ask for an additional appropriation of $30,000 to add to transient lodging tax. Then the Affordable Housing Fund, we need to change a category of funding there. The fund will be reimbursing the general fund for $94,000 worth of support services costs, as well as direct programming support by community development staff. And they also will be transferring $10,500,000, $10,500 to the building fund for administrative support of the CET. The, oh, goodness, I'm spacing. Someone help me jump in.
Construction excise tax.
Thank you very much. The construction excise tax for affordable housing for that administrative support. Then the final change I'm requesting is, in the Wastewater Services Fund, an additional appropriation of $40,000, also associated with the impact of the unbudgeted billing services charges that began this year. So that is detailed in the Resolution 2023-29. Sorry.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. And I think we will go to, I'm assuming your presentation is complete, and if not, yes. So any discussion questions from counselors? Not hearing any. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-29.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Manke.
Again.
And a second from Counselor Gary. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-24, a resolution of the city of McMinnville approving a collection rate increase not to exceed 4% for Recology Inc. And I'd like to again call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present, if you're ready.
I have a loss. Is Dan Liu in the room?
Yes. And would you like to join us? Hold on one second. He's coming up to the dais. And thank you, gentlemen, for coming back for a second time and for the additional information that you provided in the interim. We appreciate it.
Okay, so in your packet on page 114, this describes, we are following up essentially with the information that was requested from the previous council meeting. And this will, we're also, we maintain the resolution that would include a 4% rate increase for recology for solid waste collection. And I apologize, I'm going to have to.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you. I'm sure if this, yes, thank you for the presentation. I don't know if, gentlemen, there's anything you want to add at this time?
Mayor Drabkin, thanks for having us here this evening. We're just here to answer any questions if there are any, given the follow-up information that we provided, that I think is in your packet as well.
It is in our packet. Thank you. Any questions from council at this time?
Mayor, nobody else has a question I want?
Yes, please go ahead, Counsel President.
First, just thanks Recology for the follow-up information that's in our packet. Much appreciated. Between that last meeting and this meeting, I did have a couple constituents reach out, and they were curious on your timeline of going to a scale-based system that's more equitable than the square-foot-based system you have for dumping currently. I know that came up last year or the year prior when Riverbend went to that emergency closure. or the year prior when Riverbend went to that emergency closure. I mean, you guys had to pivot and become a transfer facility. And I didn't know if you could provide any additional context on that. As far as this ordinance was written, I recognize that it gets you very close to your operating range by contract, and it's on the lower side of that, so I have no issues with the ordinance as presented.
Council President Garvin, could you restate the question in there? I didn't quite catch it.
So, when contractors and citizens come into your transfer facility to dump trash, they're billed by square footage, the size of their trailer. And when that first opened, we were told at council that eventually a weighing system would be going in there, which is a more equitable way to dump trash, which is why when you haul to a dump, they do it by weight, not by square footage. And so, I was curious where you guys were in that process of bringing that scaling system online? Or for the foreseeable future, we're gonna continue to get, our citizens are gonna continue to get billed by square footage? Which historically has been inconsistent. Dump load to dump load, depending on who's working the gate.
Counselor, President Garvin, this is Ernie Martin.
Could you just speak into your mic a little? That way we make sure to get it for the public record. Thank you.
All right. Council President Garvin, this is Ernie Martin. So, we are looking at some permitting or some designing this coming year. And so, we're hoping to get a new design and move forward for expansion. It's just in the planning process right now. But to have additional scales right now, our footprint is too small. And we're hoping for a plan to be designed here in the next year.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That design, are you, is that just for the scales that Garvin mentioned? Or are you guys looking at any other, onboarding any other offerings and elements as part of that potential expansion? Recognizing that you just mentioned you're bumping up against spatial capacity already.
Yeah, with the closure of the landfill, our footprint is really small, and we're getting by right now. But we adjusted really rapidly for this increase in tonnages. But as far as expansion, it's gonna be a public drop-off, is what we're looking at. And some covered area, and potentially some scales as well.
So, not the element of construction waste or construction waste recycling or diversion or lead qualifying sorting?
Yeah, so right now, we do take clean wood at the organic site.
Take what?
Clean wood.
Right, okay.
So, a contractor can still order a dumpster or a drop box and have clean wood put in there, and it's gonna be taken and recycled, right? If they contaminate that box with garbage, if it's not clean wood, it's gonna come into the tipping floor at the transfer station. We do not have the footprint to sort everything out as of right now. So, what the future plans look like, I can't commit to or say, but we are gonna start working on having some consultations.
Okay.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Yeah, I just wanna, since I got you in front of me, I'm gonna say it every time I have you in front of me. Please keep me up to date on the cruncher for Styrofoam, because that is something that I think is gonna be very beneficial. I know we have a lot of Styrofoam going through, and that's one of the reasons people don't take the time to get it to you.
Any additional questions or comments? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-29. Nope, sorry, for Resolution Number 2023-24.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Manke and a second from Counselor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Aye.
Are you saying aye? Are you, nay, you're voting nay. Thank you. You got it, okay. The resolution has passed five to one in favor. Four to one in favor, thank you. I apologize. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-31, a resolution approving the award of a professional services contract to Century West Engineering Airport Master Plan Update Project 2022-10. And I'd like to call on Willie Williamson, our airport manager, to present. And I'll go ahead and present again, thank you. And Willie's available for questions if needed. Thank you, Director Pagano.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll reference the staff report on page 149 of your packet. The McMinnville Municipal Airport is due for an update to the Airport Master Plan. The city advertised for consultants for this work in September of 2022. We received one proposal from Century West Engineering. Their proposal was determined to meet all requirements of the request for proposals. Century West has considerable experience with projects of this size and type of airport throughout the Northwest, and also has specific experience at the McMinnville Municipal Airport with an understanding of the community as well as the environmental concerns related to the airport. The estimated total cost for the master plan update is $506,000. The majority of the costs will be funded from the FAA grant, and an estimated city share is about $26,000 from the airport fund. So unless there are any questions, staff recommends approving Resolution 2023-31.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have, I just have one, and I don't know if it can be answered off the top of anybody's head. So, if you can't, please say so. I know this has been in, like, when we met, I don't know, months ago, October, whatever. Willie and Ann, we talked about the Airport Master Plan being updated and the need for it. And I'm just curious what the estimate at that time for the city portion of that was.
I think it's been in our CAP list for about $500,000 the whole time we've had it on the list. So, I think all along, it's been about $25,000, $26,000.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-31. So moved.
So moved.
I'll have a motion from Council President Garvin and a second from Counselor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move into ordinances for the City of McMinnville. Tonight, we will consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5134. Does any council member need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? We'll now consider the matter of Ordinance Number 5134. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our interim land use attorney, Bill Kabeizman, please read the ordinance by title only? You're muted, Bill, Mr. Kabeizman, sorry. Oh, well, yes. You're definitely muted, because we can't hear you.
Your audio isn't coming through, Bill.
Oh, you got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, technical problems on my end. Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 5134, an ordinance amending Title 17 zoning of the McMinnville Municipal Code in the Northeast Gateway Plan Development Overlay, Ordinance 4971, to amend standards for short-term rentals, approving the decision findings and conclusionary findings for Docket G1-23, and ending the moratorium enacted by Ordinance Number 5118 and extended by Ordinance Number 5127.
Thank you very much. I would now call on Tom Shower, our senior planner, to present.
I don't have anything further following the public hearing. Unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. I'll now open this up for council discussion. Any counselor want to start with some thoughts or have additional comments for staff? Council President Garvin?
Yeah, Tom, I was curious, I didn't see it anywhere in the minutes from the planning commission level, but did they explore or consider anything of like a state residency requirement? And is that common in other jurisdictions that have looked at strengthening short-term rentals? In our local case, it seems like the majority of compliance issues have came from out-of-state-owned properties.
Did you say a state residency requirement?
Correct, yeah.
Where the business would need to be.
Like you need to live within the state of Oregon to have a short-term rental permit in the City of McMinnville.
No, that wasn't discussed, and I don't know if, Bill may have any, it looks like Bill's got his hand raised. He may have some comments regarding that issue.
Thank you, Tom. And Council President, I'm not aware of that hadn't been raised. However, there may be some constitutional concerns with a state residency allowing residents of Oregon to do something that residents of other states aren't allowed to do. So, you know, we'd have to look into that a little further, but there are some concerns, I do have some concerns about that approach.
I could definitely be wrong, but at least as of recently, I know that Hood River did have a residency requirement, not a state residency requirement, but they did have a city requirement. So, you had to be a resident of Hood River in order to have a short-term vacation rental in Hood River.
And a local residency doesn't present the same constitutional concerns that the state does.
Would it be any different constitutional concern than how they used to regulate OLCC marijuana licenses by state residency requirements?
Well, is that still not federally applicable? It's difficult to tell with marijuana juice, because there is no federal allowance of that. And in terms of state liquor licenses, the liquor, when prohibition was ended, there were actually provisions enacted into the end of prohibition that allows states to do certain things that aren't available for other types of commerce.
Okay, thank you, Bill. I have Mr. Kabeizman.
Thank you. I have some questions that are kind of in the same line on council presidents, and some of them are, some of them are kind of similar into how some of that regulation happens with OLCC, although that's not really the genesis of the question, but I could, you could see a correlation. So, I'm also wondering if there's considerations on cap on the total number of short-term vacation rentals, either just a cap based on percentage of citizens or a number of households, if that was considered. So, how much of our housing stock essentially would be allowed to become short-term vacation rentals? I also have a question if there was consideration, and I don't remember seeing this, but of an operator license fee, which is something I know other communities are using right now. And the methodology that I've used or heard at conferences that short-term vacation rentals that get operating licensing fees that act essentially as business licenses, with 25, the specific example I heard, at 25% going to cover administrative costs, et cetera, and then 75% would go directly into the Affordable Housing Fund. And so, I'm wondering if those conversations happened.
I would note that there was discussion. I know the work sessions were led by Chair Winfield and Commissioner McClellan, and they did outreach to a variety of communities to look at best practices, brought back a range of ideas for discussion, and worked through those systematically. I know the question about a cap or percentage was discussed. That was not included in the final draft. I don't recall any discussion occurring about the question of operator license fees.
Okay, thank you. And I had one other question, but I need to find something in my time date stamp in my email here to be able to key it up appropriately. Counselor Payne, did you want to follow up on that?
Yes. Excuse me, yes, thank you. So, going back an hour, we were talking, Mayor Drabkin had mentioned bed and breakfast. And in looking at, let me see, I'm on page 20 of our packet, Tom, and it references bed and breakfast being allowed subject to short-term rental standards versus being conditionally permitted. That's 20 of our packet. That's page eight of the ordinance. It's in the, kind of like the listing diagram that lists out each of the uses and the zones.
Yeah, I, page 20 of the packet, is that Exhibit B to Ordinance 5134?
Yes.
Okay, and so, there's a listing of bed and breakfast that you're asking about that?
Yeah, so it says lodging, and then it says bed and breakfast/vacation home rental, and that's, it's stricken. And then it just says short-term rental, and then the next line says hotel motel. And then there's no other place where bed and breakfast is listed in that commercial listing. So, I just wonder if it's appropriate to add bed and breakfast somewhere, whether it's individual, but that it's categorized appropriately with your mention of conditionally permitted.
Understood, okay. So, that page is the amendment to the Northeast Gateway Overlay District, and those are the uses in that district. So.
You're saying there's no bed and breakfasts allowed there, then?
So, currently lodging is a permitted use. I think if you look at how lodging is regulated in that district, there's three sub areas of the Northeast Gateway. Most of the properties are either industrial or commercial in their underlying zoning. But if you look at what's allowed in Zone 1 and Zone 2, those only have commercial or industrial underlying zoning. So, lodging is a permitted use. If you did a bed and breakfast, it would fall under lodging. You wouldn't need to get a special approval like you would for bed and breakfast where we have those listed as a conditional use in the R4 and OR zones. So, we would just regulate that as lodging. The Northeast Gateway Overlay used, still had some of the terminology that predated our current regulations in the zoning ordinance. So, it still used the term vacation home rental, where those terms have been combined with short-term rentals in our current zoning provisions. So, the difference, I guess, is if bed and breakfast is still intended to be a permitted use in the underlying R2 and R4 zones in the Northeast Gateway, then yes, bed and breakfast should be listed as conditional. Right now, it's only conditional in R4, and it's not permitted in R2. And those are the, I believe, the two zones that are within the Northeast Gateway.
So, on the page pri, no, two pages prior, where it offers some of the code language, 17.60.060, it indicates parking necessities for bed and breakfast establishments under A.1.
Yes, so, the Northeast Gateway Plan Development Overlay is a separate ordinance from the zoning ordinance. And in some cases, it references provisions of the zoning ordinance. So, under the zoning ordinance, bed and breakfasts are conditionally permitted in R4 and OR zones. So, if you're to develop those as a conditional use in those zones, you'd need to comply with them. The question is, does the change in lodging here? I understand the question, so, is this? so, um, is this overly restrictive in that, let me put up a map.
I guess I'm thinking, could it go either direction? Like, could they, could a bed and breakfast be effectively too restricted? Or, um, in, in that, are the parking requirements the same for a bed and breakfast in a residential zone as it would be in the overlay?
Um, the, the use is slightly different, and, uh, I'd have to look to see what the regulations are for parking for bed and breakfast. I don't recall off, offhand. Um, let me put up one map here, see if it helps. So, in the Northeast Gateway, there's property that's zoned R2 here and here. There's a small area zoned R4. Um, let's just say the Northeast Gateway Zone didn't exist here today. Um, bed and breakfasts are a conditional use in the R4 zone. Um, so if, um, if you'd like that portion to be regulated in the same manner as the rest of the R4, um, zone properties, uh, we can provide that, uh, revision. Uh, to note that bed and breakfasts would be a conditionally permitted use subject to the B&amp;B standards of the, that would apply to other residential properties. It would affect just this area if you'd like to, to incorporate that. And then as far as the difference in parking standards for B&amp;Bs versus short-term rentals, um, I'd have to look that up here to see, uh, didn't have that information at hand. This is essentially, uh, the definition of a bed and breakfast that's allowed in the, the R4 and OR zone. So, um, it has, uh, slightly, it's the old, kind of older version of B&amp;Bs, and it tends to be larger. So essentially, it's like a large version of what we'd call a resident occupied short-term rental, um, that has three or more guest sleeping rooms. So the parking, uh, provisions, uh, are provided. It's a little bit different than what applies to a resident occupied short-term rental. So we're, we hadn't proposed any, any changes to those standards.
That answers my question, this slide, thank you.
Thank you. Um, my, uh, my last, my, my last thought is really just, um, before we move on, is, is, is really just kind of, uh, um, it's just my thoughts on this, it's not really a question. Um, and, uh, uh, I appreciate the work of the Planning Commission. I feel like that they did a good job with the community engagement and, um, bringing forward, uh, a recommendation that had been really, had been, had been worked through. Um, I have looked at the data and, uh, on this a lot and, um, other, uh, surrounding data as well. And, um, uh, while this might not be popular, I don't, uh, think that, I, I honestly don't think this is restrictive enough. Um, I think we had a 660-foot spacing previously, and the only complaint was that we didn't have enough short-term vacation rentals. I know our com, economy has completely changed since that time, but now our only, um, complaints are about them. Um, it seems, and problems with them. Um, but it's not, it's not only that, it's that, um, we have testimony, um, coming, uh, we had a young gentleman that planned on testifying tonight but couldn't make it here, but, uh, had he, he would have told you that twice he, his family has been displaced, um, for a short-term vacation rental, that he is, his family has twice been made homeless because of a short-term vacation rental. Um, I, when, if we're looking at only what's in residential zones at 63 versus the combined residential and commercial, and that's 165 units, we have, I, I hate back then napkin math, but, you know, we have approximately 14,000 households, uh, in McMenville. Um, that's approximately 1% of our housing stock. Um, that's, uh, that's in a short-term vacation rental. And, uh, and so while, on one hand, you could interpret this data to say we do not have a problem moving short-term, permitting short-term vacation rentals in our residential zones, um, when we have, uh, a lack of affordable housing, when we've recently been designated by Oregon Housing and Community Services as a severely rent-burdened city, meaning that over 25% of our renters are paying over 50% of their income just to be able to rent here, um, when we know people are moving out of the city seeking more affordable housing. Um, I think that that is, uh, valid data as well. Um, I, uh, I, I was hoping for a more restrictive ordinance. I am not going to, uh, uh, attempt to tinker, um, with this without, because there's no opportunity where there wouldn't be the right opportunity to put a more thoughtful recommendation in front of the council. Um, but I know a lot of communities are, are much more restrictive. Um, and my concern is that we continue to lose, uh, affordable housing stock when we cannot even, um, create affordable housing stock, and, and we're working so hard to do it. And so I just, my interpretation of the data, the data provided, is that this is a problem for the city of McMenville, and we should be more restrictive in our residential zones. Um, and I just wanted to, um, get that on the record. And Counselor Mankey, I'm sorry, I see you have your hand up, thanks for listening.
Um, uh, Mayor, thank you for calling on me, and I would reiterate what the mayor has just said. I, I was genuinely surprised we went to 500 instead of not back to the 660. But, um, and also, I honestly feel like there were a number of people that brought up the commercial issues in their testimony, and I honestly think maybe we should take a look at that down the road, sooner than later. I, I too am extremely concerned about this housing. I, I realize it's great for the tourism issue, but frankly, we need affordable housing for people that work here.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Any additional, Counselor Gary?
Thank you, I'll, I'll add my name to the list of folks who are a little disappointed and hopeful of a more restrictive policy, and, and a little discouraged that we didn't get into any commercial regulation. I understand the eccentricities of difficulties around that, but I, yeah, still was a little discouraged. We didn't have anything rel, reg, regulating those, um, uh, so I'd add my name to that chorus. Um, questions for staff? What's the end date of the moratorium, um, that currently exists?
I believe it's June 29th, if the ordinance didn't pass. Yes, June 29th.
Okay. Um, couple of questions in the nitty-gritty. How do you track, how do we track the ownership change? So if I have a permitted short-term rental and I sell the house and I take on a new owner, how does that, how do you guys track that?
There's a annual renewal for these, so they're required to, to reapply every year to update their information.
And so the annual renewal is part of a permit? I have, I get the permit, I have to annually renew and fill out the paperwork? And I read that the renewal, each renewal period will trigger the requirement to follow the new rules. Is that correct?
Uh, to follow the operational rules, they would, if you were located, uh, you know, you were approved for a permit based on a 200-foot spacing standard, and you came in to renew, and you were within 500 feet of an existing, uh, short-term rental, you wouldn't lose your, your facility. So the, the existing provisions in effect at the time, the spacing standards of the parking, and the ability to rent out the, the units, those would not change. They'd be based on the original approval. See more, what I would say, operational or enforcement provisions would, uh, be in effect at the time of renewal.
And what about, remind me, gonna, transfer?
Uh, so, transfer, uh, unlike most land use, it does not run with the land. So it cannot be, ownership cannot be transferred. That would be a new application. It would have to comply with the spacing standards at that time. Other than, ownership is defined with some limited provisions for, uh, inheritance and things like that. But, um, other than those narrow provisions written into the ordinance, uh, an ownership change would trigger a new application.
Okay.
Council President, I see you unmuted. Any additional comments from counselors?
My audio got cut off there for a minute when Tom was answering your question, but, um, when, when does the moratorium end? It ends June 30th, so if this doesn't pass, we just revert to our current ordinance, correct?
Correct, unless, uh, yeah, unless something was to be adopted, uh, in advance of, of the end of the moratorium, we'd revert.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so, could, 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 uh, the passage of it include direction back to the Planning Commission to tackle fairly immediately the commercial aspect of it?
I don't know.
I mean, it'd be, it'd be, you know-
The question is, uh, could we, um, essentially, um, it's not really amending the ordinance, but could, could we, could we add a notation on here that, uh, the, could we, could, could we give the instruction back to the Planning Commission that they need to address commercial, uh, STVRs, um, as we move this ordinance through its process? I don't, Mr. Kabeizman?
Yes, you can. There is no timeline, as with the statute judicial, where you have a, a timeline out there. You can take whatever time you want. If you are not satisfied, you can either amend it in front of the council. You could direct the Planning Commission to go back and reconsider certain aspects, to address additional aspects, or take whatever, uh, give whatever direction like to the, the council. The form of that would be what, you know, we'd have, I'd have to think through exactly what that looks like, whether it is to simply give direction to staff to bring it back to the Planning Commission to tell the, you know, to, to give, you know, to address these certain objects, certain, certain, um, areas of concern for the council. Um, it looks like, uh, City Manager may have some additional ideas.
So Mayor, if, if it was the council's will that the Planning Commission take up the issue of, uh, of short-term rentals in commercial, commercially-zoned properties, we would look at that as an addition to the work plan for the Community Development Department? We'd, we'd bring it back to you in the context of our full work plan and show you what the priorities are and what we could do and what we couldn't do in terms of timing. So we'd treat it as a new project under the work plan issue.
Thank you. And there's no option of extending the moratorium at this time, is that correct? Mr. Kabeizman?
Um, I wasn't here for when it was adopted and what went into that. Typically, moratoriums are limited in time under, under state statute, uh-
Are, or aren't, Mr. Kabeizman?
They are.
Yeah.
Um, and what I'm looking at now is 197522 that talks about moratorium, moratoria, and, um, seeing how this, that applies to construction or land development. Um, you know, I, as I'm looking at the moratorium statute, I'm not certain this actually, uh, would apply in the same way as my initial thought. Um, and so, um, my initial take on it would be that you actually could extend the moratoria, moratorium further. Um, but that's, uh, you know, a, a seat of pants call that I'm not, I, I would want to look into a little bit further, just because I have not been in, involved in the adoption of the original moratorium and what, and the reasons behind it.
Sure, and, uh, and worth noting as well that we've heard from some of the council, but not necessarily a majority of the council, kind of expressing their desire, so that, that question may not be, uh, relevant based on the will of the council regardless. Um, uh, I guess, um, uh, I guess I, I would be interested in knowing, uh, kind of from the counselors we haven't heard with, if they're generally satisfied with this, uh, and, and ready to move forward on it, um, or if they are interested in kind of having some more discussion around it, just so we're, um, we're moving, moving it forward, uh, one way or another. Counselor Payne?
I am not really comfortable extending the moratorium, so I can start there. Um, beyond, I think it's June 30th, right?
29th, but yes.
Okay, June 29th. Um, that's my one-year anniversary on council. Um, irrelevant, um-
I brought you a flower.
I'll take two.
Oh, great.
Um, the, so, I'm not comfortable extending the moratorium. 500 feet or 660 feet, I could, I could go either way. I don't want to get into the private property owner rights kind of mess of things. 200 to 500 feet is a good distance, and from the maps that Tom shared, I feel like 500 feet was actually pretty reasonable. Um, but I, I, I agree with you and Zach, or Counselor Gary, on getting into the kind of more commercially side of things, and that that should happen sooner than later. And whether we get into it tonight, we've got 32 minutes-ish.
Counselor Genowitz?
Hmm, I don't need any more discussion for my vote. Um, I think that my memory, and I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, but my memory was that Heather Richards had said at the last moratorium conversation that that was the last one we could do. Um, so I would throw that out for part of the discussion. Um, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, and, um, Counselor Mankey?
I am fine with going, with what we have tonight. I just would like to see a continued, another discussion regarding the commercial, uh, whenever it's feasible to plan it out.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, Council President, do you want to add anything?
Um, I mean, I like, I like a lot of what Planning Commission brought forward as far as ideas for this updated ordinance. Spacing is one of the things I would disagree on. Um, I think, you know, the spacing is a solution looking for a problem where the, uh, really our problem is with, is with out-of-state bad actors, and not really with locally-controlled short-term rentals. So I would like to see some more proactive policy around that, as well as I would entertain an operator's license, um, that has a multiplier by, by the amount of rooms that are occupied, to help get some money into that Affordable Housing Fund. The other thing I think we could look at as well would, uh, would be to see who's actually just parking on, on permits, and if that's something that we want to address from a transit lodging tax standpoint. Um, whether we address that with it being more expensive to park on a permit if you're not generating any transit lodging tax revenue, or how we want to do that from a policy standpoint. But those are kind of the three things I don't see in this current policy, and, I mean, as far as- And, I mean, as far as the complaints I've seen outside of, you know, Mark Davis's neighborhood and the neighborhood over by the pool, the constituents that have addressed concerns with me over short-term rentals, they have not been related to spacing or saturation levels. And I don't feel that our 65 short-term rentals in our residential zones are what have moved the needle on affordable housing. I feel the gentrification of our apartment complexes, especially in the downtown core that used to reside over commercial, that are now, you know, boutique hotel rooms. Those have had a greater effect on affordable housing in the city than 65 short-term rental permits. So, I would like to keep the spacing at 200 feet, but it sounds like I'm in the minority on that.
Well, I will say, Counselor, that's one of the reasons why no more discussion is going to change my vote, is that I am also in agreement with you. I don't see, I'm not persuaded by the arguments that are being made that we have a problem in affordable housing being created by our short-term rentals. So, I'm perfectly happy with the 200-foot distance.
I have an additional question for staff. Was there a discussion, and if so, or if not, is there a tool in the planning toolbox that's, akin to an overlay district, I'll call it an overlay district, I may be using the wrong term, that creates a zone where you could govern these differently than elsewhere? So, sort of like the Northeast Gateway governs that area differently than the rest of the city? Is there a way to create an overlay district, too, for this conversation, differently regulate STRs than the rest of the city?
Are you talking about a difference in the core area versus the outlying areas? Or different?
I've heard the most concern about spatial, spatial, I've heard the most spatial concerns for short-term rentals in and around the downtown area, so that, and you've highlighted it pretty well in your sheets of the, showing the five, what the 500-foot spacing looks like in this sort of northwest Birch to Elm area, you know, Fifth to 20th or whatever, and then, and then maybe the Sodan neighborhood. But creating a zone that differently regulates the short-term rentals, you know, with higher standards or higher spacing standards or different operating standards than the rest of the city?
I guess I would say there's any number of tools available, as long as it meets the basic tenants of a public law of, is there a reasonable public purpose to be achieved that's being applied equitably, why it would be a different standard in one area than a different one, and that your regulation is furthering that public purpose and that public policy. So, yes, as long as that was applied consistently towards a valid public purpose, yes. If there's a concern about concentration of short terminals in neighborhoods and those impacting neighborhoods, then if you're looking at applying those differently, is that concern applied equally in other neighborhoods where you would have a different standard? I don't know. Bill, do you have anything to add?
No, you've hit the right things. The important part is, yes, there are tools available to do that, whether it's following the existing zone lines of some kind or creating a new overlays line, or there may be other ways as well. But, simple answer is yes.
Okay.
I think also to the question about like an operator license, if there's further interest in that, I mean, there are issues that can be considered around short terminals that probably would come to you outside of the zoning ordinance if there was interest in that, as a separate, more like a business license regulation or something like that that wouldn't, within the zoning ordinance, but would relate to short-term rentals.
Okay. Well, I definitely heard some interest on bringing back into future work plan, evaluation on commercial, on commercial properties as well. I heard that, I think, from at least three counselors. And unless anybody has any further discussion, I would ask for a motion to pass Ordinance Number 5134 to a second reading.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Mankey. And a second from Counselor Gary. I'd now call on, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Ordinance Number 5134, well, I'm sorry, I think I'm a little out of order here. Ordinance Number 5134 passes with a vote of three to two. Is that what you heard? I had two dissenting, Counsel President, you dissented as well, is that correct?
Correct.
It passes with a vote of three to two on its first reading and will be brought back for a second reading on June 13th. And will we need to bring it back with an emergency, an emergency clause on it at that point in order to meet our land use criteria?
Not to meet the land use criteria, but to have that vote before the moratorium expires.
Okay.
Bill, anything further?
If it's not with an emergency clause, it wouldn't go into effect until 30 days after the enactment under your charter. And so, you'd have that, about a two-week period in which applications would be subject to the previous regime. So, if you want this to go into effect when the, when the, when the moratorium ends, you want them governed by the new period, you're going to have to have some type of emergency clause to make it come into effect sooner than 30 days.
Thank you. I think the intent is to be at least consistent, even if we don't, even if there's not a grand on the exact direction. I think the, I understand this council to prefer not to have our laws wishwash and change within a period of weeks through three different phases. So, I believe it would be appropriate, and I would request that you bring this back with an emergency clause for the June 13th vote. Right?
And Bill, is there any question of, does the ordinance on second reading, can it be changed to have that emergency provision on second reading, or does it have to be identical on first reading?
I believe, and I would probably defer to the city council, the city attorney with more familiarity with the charter, to make sure that there aren't any charter implications that are concerned. Do you have any concerns, Mr. Gal?
I believe it can be amended on the second reading, as long as the amendment is read in full.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your participation this morning, or evening. It's the start of my day, don't worry. Thank you for your participation this evening. Good conversation, which is important. Oftentimes, the best ideas come from fleshing out different sides of the same issue. So, thank you, appreciated hearing everybody's thoughts and perspectives this evening. And I will now adjourn this city council meeting at 8:39 PM. And if the council will please join me in the boardroom to go into executive session, I would appreciate it.
And.